All right. Good afternoon, everybody. It is 1:02 PM and I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. Secretary Ingham, if you could call roll.
Okay. Okay, so. Commissioner Gibson, Vice Chair Gibson.
Here.
Secretary Ingham's here. Commissioner Obenshein.
Here.
Commissioner Beck.
Here.
Commissioner Klosisilic.
Here.
And Commissioner Taylor is absent, if I'm not mistaken, and Commissioner Manis.
Here.
And Commissioner Kurio is absent. So seven, seven present.
Thank you. And Chair Burt's here.
Oh, sorry. Oh, my God.
Okay. I'm, I'll be speaking enough anyway, so it's good to go. We're good to go. All right. So that takes us to our first item, which is update and possibilities for future epicenter, epicenter features. And I want to thank our awesome CSD staff for getting Mary Bradley to come and talk to us. One of the things that we, we spoke about when we were talking about epicenter in the Performance Framework Group is that we felt like, you know, maybe Patty and I got a little bit of exclusive peek into epicenter. And we thought it would be a good idea for all the commissioners to get kind of a general overview of epicenter, the way that Patty did when we first started, and then go into our, like, New Mexico specific, what's been going on for our state, in particular with the partnership with epicenter. So, Mary, thank you so much for joining us, and I will hand the floor over to you.
Yeah, great. It's a pleasure to be here and an honor to be with all of you today. I'm also joined by Stephanie McKean, who's been leading, you know, our team with epicenter, working with the team on your end. So we're super excited. We're going to share some updates with you today and make sure that, you know, you know where we're at currently and what's coming in the next couple of months, especially as new data is rolling in on performance for schools. And that will become visual for you, for your portfolio, and also for each school. And then also talk about like some things that are going to be coming in the future. I am excited to see some of you, a lot of you actually, next week at the NACSA conference, so that will be great. And a reminder, I know some of you have already signed up for our breakfast, but be ready to be inspired. Our CEO, Jim Gunner, will be leading that messaging, and he's super excited, and so am I. So please join us at that breakfast and say hi. Stop by and talk to the team and be curious. We are going to be doing some epicenter release announcements next week at NACSA as well. And so there's some new things coming in, and you'll get to take advantage of those as well coming up. So I have Stephanie here. I am going to kind of flip it, is actually do kind of an update. And then Stephanie will actually be able to open the site and show you some of the, some stuff live. And so you'll be able to see what this is actually looking like. We have your performance frameworks built in the system. We have put data in, because that data is going to be coming in over the next two months. So as academic data has been released, financial data with the audit will be coming in for each school in the next month. And then that will populate your scorecards. And so you'll be able to see what that is going to look like. We've put some mock data in, so you can actually see against your frameworks, what that's going to, what your view is going to be for each school and your portfolio. And then also introduce to you the school report. And so your school report actually brings in for each school some really important documents for you as commissioners that you'll be able to see. And so it helps to consolidate a lot into epis, from epicenter into one location. And so that will be also, Stephanie will show what that looks like currently. And also, we want to always offer, if you guys would like a separate, like, hey, walk us through this, train us how to best use this as commissioners, we can also do that at the next meeting as well. I know we have some future time with you planned. And so we can really, I encourage you to get into the system, log in, check it out, poke around a little bit. And then, once you become familiar, even that, when we do a training with you, it'll be more pertinent. It'll be more impactful, because you've spent a little bit of time in it. And so we do plan to do that for future meetings, is walk you through some of the key aspects of the system as a vantage point and a perspective as a commissioner, what would be really important for you to, to be able to view and look at in the future. So I'm going to share my screen. I do need sharing capabilities, and so will Stephanie, if we could get those granted.
All right, we're getting into it right now.
No problem, no problem. And I will say, I'm going to be managing, I am on my laptop. I usually have about three screens in front of me, but I just landed from a trip in Florida. So we had a Florida Charter Schools Conference presence this week, which was great, so. But I'm glad my plane was all on time. That ma, makes me happy today.
Well, should have. Are you both trying to share? You and Stephanie, or just you, Mary?
I need to share first, and then Stephanie.
Okay, I mean, it's, the, the permissions are set to let any of the panelists share, so you should not be having an issue. I don't.
I do, oh, there it is. Okay. Sorry about that.
Okay.
All right, just a moment. All right, let me get this into presentation mode. Like I said, it's a little bit more difficult when. There we go. All right. So this is, I'm going to give you the update first, and then we'll have Stephanie pop open the live system. So what I want to share with you today is the scope of our work status. So we entered into agreement with you in the previous year. We're going to talk about performance monitoring scorecards and the school report that you'll be able to view as soon as you log in. You'll be able to go to every school report right now. And then, as the performance monitoring data comes in, you'll be able to look at that as well for each school. And then we're going to talk about a discussion on the next features that we're working on and working with the team. So this is just, I'm not going to go over every single point of this. I will say, overall, these are the, the highlights of epicenter for you. The data system is implemented, has been over this past year. Document management system, it now collects your contracts, the reports, related documents for each school. And the new school application feature was launched this year. And so we're really excited about that current state. We are also looking, I know there's a desire, is how do we streamline more things for schools? So we are exploring and working with the team. Stephanie will actually be on site in November, working in person with the team, which I think is going to be great, to really work through some of these details of like, what's next? How can we even streamline this for the team and for the schools? So we're exploring adding, you know, different departments, and how can that be more streamlined through epicenter instead of multiple systems? Also, making sure that, you know, your documents, your foundational documents for the PEC are in there. So you even can go in there and find things that you need that are related to the work that you do. So we're going to continue to make sure that that is uploaded and available for you, so that you can have the system work for you as well, not just for the schools and the oversight side. The other item was to provide compliance and performance management, so academics, finance, different data pieces, things like that. Eighty-five percent of the requirements are scheduled for academic, finance, and organizational scorecards, and they're ready for the data. So like I said, Stephanie will show you what that looks like with some mock data in it. So as that data comes over, in, over the next two months, that will populate the scorecard. We're also looking at building a year-over-year performance dashboard, so we do have portfolio, portfolio view. Stephanie will show you what that looks like. So you'll be able to see, how's our portfolio doing on all of our measures? And then you can drill down into each school. And then also bringing in demographic data, different data items that the subcommittee has identified that would be really helpful. And then also, we have a transparency feature for school websites, for your website, that you can take anything from epicenter and bring it over to transparently put on the website for the public. Also, provide a data system. And so epicenter is available on web browser. And precursor to next week in our announcement, we are releasing an app. So now your school leaders and your team and you will be able to have an app on your phone, so for easier, even more mobile access. So we are mobile friendly, but with the app, it'll be able to provide that. So when anybody is anywhere, they click on the app and they can get into epicenter. So we're super excited about that, and that's being released next week at NACSA. So you're the first to know. So this is a, a kind of a perk of having this call.
Is that, will that allow school leaders to kind of like take pictures on their phone of documents and be able to upload directly from their phone into?
They actually could, yes.
All right, cool.
Yep. So they would be able to do anything that they can on the website, on their desktop and laptop, as they would be able on their phone as well. Currently, right now, only files can be posted publicly, but we are looking at how to bring that school profile and different data elements into a website to be able to post publicly. So that's actually in our development roadmap. So we'll be working with your team on that, as you determine, what do we want on our website about every school? And then we can make sure that there's a way from epicenter to get that onto your website, if that makes the most sense. And so Stephanie will be working through these future state items with the team when she's on site, and making sure everything's moving forward as we continue to build more functionality and it, it to work for you. So that's current state. Just wanted to say, like, this was a scope of work. We have made a lot of progress with your team. The team's been great to work with. And now it's that future state work that we're going to be focusing on, that's really the details to, not only transparency, but also for you as a commission, to be able to have even more information in there that you didn't have as in a system before. So we're excited to be able to continue to think through that and build this out. And we'll be working with Bridget and her team, but also continuing to get feedback from the subgroup as well. Any questions on this or curiosities? All right. In addition to the app, we'll have some other things that are going to be released over the next three weeks. So there will be a release at, during NACSA, there'll be a release the following week of new features, and then throughout November and December. So we'll keep you updated on what those look like. But I think it's, it's going to definitely enhance the system even more. So I'm just going to show you, I'm just going to go over the different. Yep.
Commissioner Beck, do you have a question?
Yeah, real quick. So when is the first day I can download that app?
The first day, do you have an Android or an Apple? You have an Android?
Oh, no, 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 not at all. I have an Apple, of course.
All right, well, so do I. So next week, we're going to be doing the kind of sneak peek and giving people first access to it during the NACSA conference. And then we'll be pushing it out for everyone that isn't there the following week. So you actually should be getting an email with our new release that will, and Stephanie will make sure, actually, she sends it to all of you and make sure you get it, that shows where, in the App Store, where to find it. Any other questions?
Thank you, by the way.
Absolutely, absolutely. We're really excited to bring it. We've, this has been a vision for a little bit, and we were able to make it happen. And I have it on my phone, so I'm super excited to, to be able to share that with everybody else. All right. So we have a couple of features, and Stephanie will show this live, so this, actually, because there's some, a lot of information here that you can't see on a screenshot. So the school report, this is going to really help you to be able to get to some information about a school without looking at several different places across the system. Stephanie will bring this up live, and so you'll be able to see it in, in action. But it's really bringing some key documents about each school, the performance framework reports will be linked for each school. So it's really going to be your one-stop shop for a school. And, and I think this is going to be really beneficial for you. So instead of looking through folders or trying to figure out where things are, we're able to build this section out for you. So each school has all their pertinent information for you right there. This is actually, we're able to build this out even more, so I think we have a pretty good base, and Stephanie will show that to you. But we'll be working with the subgroup and a small group of the commissioners to say, what else would you like to see on this? And so we're really excited to, to show that to you. The financial scorecard, academic and operational ones are built. As I said, that data will be coming in. So Stephanie will show this live, because once you get into it and school data is populated, you'll be able even to extend all of these measures and be able to see the data that went into it. And so how epicenter work, we took your framework, we built all your business rules into it, and we mapped the data that will be coming into those measures and business rules. And so now you'll have something that produces. Hopefully, it will save a lot of time and also formats it in a really friendly way. You'll be able to see this, and also schools will be able to see it. And so as performance data comes in, this will populate, and then you can produce it for, or give access to schools to also see it. So we have the financial scorecard built, based on your financial framework. We have your organizational scorecard built, according to your framework. And we also have the academic scorecard built, according to your framework. And so this is all customized to the measures that you have set for schools. And you're now able to see, once that data comes in, how are schools doing? You can pull it up, and then also the portfolio view is pretty slick as well. Our next features that we're working on, and then I'll turn it over to Stephanie, is what we've heard from the, the, the working group on your end and this team, and also what we actually have planned to build out in the system, which is great when that aligns, is be able to show comparative data across schools. Right now, currently in the system, you'll be able to see overall how your portfolio is doing, and then you'll be able to see each, each school. What we've heard and what we understand is you want to be able to see comparative data. You want to be able to see, you know, how is this school doing compared to the rest of ours? And so that's something we're going to continue building out a user story for, understanding what that looks like for you. Because a lot of people say comparative data, and that can mean a million things. So we're going to be working with you and the team to really understand, what does that mean for New Mexico? What do you really want to see? Also, a top-to-bottom performance report. So this was shared with us, that you'd like to see who are our top performers. That's really good reason. One, you want to give them some shout-outs. It's not always, when people think about performance reports, they focus on schools that aren't doing well. And I always say, no, focus on those top ones for a lot of reasons. One, give them some credit. Give them some shout-outs, because that is definitely well-deserved. But then also, you can start to look and say, who's doing really good at what, and how do we share that out? So it's really getting to that origination of charter schools, is how do we understand what's working? And how do we help others to understand what could work for them? Demographic data has been expressed, that you'd want to be able to display that. Student enrollment, and then actual enrollment versus capacity. And so there is some things in your framework that talks about enrollment, but when it comes to enrollment versus capacity that you've approved, we want to make sure that you're able to see that as well. So these are the things that have been communicated. We're going to continue to build out this list and understanding what you want to see differently and how you want to see that, and build those user stories based on what your needs are. These, like I said, align with a lot of our other partners' user stories. So us getting that detail of what, how you'd like to see it, and what that will look like will be helpful for us. We build it right. So with that, any questions on current state, what we, and Stephanie is going to show you in the live site, and then what's coming, you know, in the future? Any questions on that or comments?
Is a lot of that stuff, let me be more, hold on, let me be more specific. A lot of the items that I see on the screen right now, are these going to be things that will be available on a, publicly as well? Or are these more internal?
Yeah, right now, we're going to be focusing on internal, and because I think some of these, you may choose to say, like, yeah, that makes sense to go public, and that doesn't. And so we'd want to understand what you want for internal purposes versus what would be helpful externally as well.
So the idea would be to build out the internal system, and then once we have that there, designate which items would then be able to be, like, put into a public.
Yeah. We'll, we'll want to understand as much as we can in the front end. So as we build it, we're building it with purpose and the end in mind. And so some things we can build out to the nth degree internally. And you may say, well, that's great for us, but we want these few data points. This is what we envision. So as much as we can get from you of like what you want internally, and how that relates to external will be helpful in the front end. And, and that will help us to be able to build it correctly. Any other questions?
Patty?
Yeah. Tying into that, what does the timeframe look like that we anticipate we would be looking at what information goes into that public-facing piece?
Yeah, that, that's something we'll, we'll want to work on with a subgroup and the team. And I, and I don't mean to say I can't answer that today, but it's going to, it's going to really depend on how complex it gets, right? Like, we can build some simple things very quickly. When the user story gets really complex, that's when it takes us more time. So what we do is we build the user story, we get as clear as possible that we can on, on your end. And then, when we take that to our developers, they give us the timelines. They also will say, you know, we can have this for you much quicker, and we'll have that back and forth to make, because you might be like, actually, Mary, that would be great, and if we could have that sooner, let's go. And then let's build, you know, for the more complex in the future. So we really need to get more concrete. Stephanie, thankfully, Stephanie knows your organization really well. She's also a key person in building out those user stories accurately. And so we'll want to get some clarity with you, and as we build those out and do some checks against that, and then we'll be able to give you some better timelines.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Any other questions? All right. And I know, like I said, I do plan to be on another call in the near future, in the next couple of months. And so we'll be able to potentially, Patty, answer that question more clearly as we get clarity both ways, okay? All right, Stephanie, I'm going to turn it over to you and pop open the live screen. She's going to mainly focus right now on the school report and the performance report, just so you can see it, because you haven't seen this yet. We have done some demos way in the past, and we can actually do that, whether it's today or in the future. But we did plan to do some additional training with you as more information's coming into the system. So you don't get lost in the system, looking at, you know, down in the weeds, but you're staying at the right level. So Stephanie, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Thanks, Mary. Hi, team. I just booked my flight to New Mexico, so I'm looking forward to spending the, the day on November 5th with the, the team and having some great conversations and working towards some additional features in the system. So first, just want to make sure, are you seeing epicenter on your screen? All right, awesome. So as Mary mentioned, I want to focus on kind of the school report and the performance scorecards. But before I jump into that too, I just want to do a shout-out to Bridget and the rest of the team as we kind of reflect on and look back at some statistical information for the previous school year. So if I hop into Compliance Center and I change my time period back to the previous school year, so 2425, this is going to show some portfolio information for all of the schools within the portfolio. So you can see that, you know, for last year, 99% were submitted, 72% were on time, 91% were accurate, meaning that they didn't have any, any returns in the system. And there's only a few that are in the review process. So this is, I would say, pretty exceptional for the first year of using epicenter. So again, kudos to the, the team and the schools as well for, for last school year. Uh, next area too, as I want to mention.
Hey, Stephanie, I want, Stephanie's used to me interrupting, but I want to pause there, because I think there is a lot to celebrate. When you look at some of those numbers just last year, and it was still getting rolled out, still stuff getting added to it. When you look at that, you had 1,500 documents were submitted in epicenter. When you think about that, and you think about how they were submitted before, inefficiently for schools and the team, it's a lot to celebrate, because that number's going to grow. When I first started epicenter at Chicago Public Schools, that number was, I think, half of what it was the next year. And it just, you know, as the system continues to get built out, you start to streamline things, either with departments or others. You really think about is like, man, how did school leaders submit all those documents before? And how did our team manage those? So I, I don't, I don't mean to just point that out, but like, sometimes this, like, even the smaller aspects of the system are something to celebrate. So this is something that you all have access to in Compliance Center. The other center, before Stephanie dives into the performance side, is School Center, where you can go and grab and look at any of your schools at any time and be able to. So if you haven't been in there in a long time, and, or you've, you know, haven't experienced epicenter and haven't logged in, and if you have trouble logging, then just reach out to the team or to our team, we can help. But you start to become more familiar, where you can go to just simply schools and School Center and Compliance Center, and that will get you pretty familiar with a lot of stuff in the system. And so those are your two key centers on the left nav, so as some of you go home, you know, while you are home, once you get off the call, you're like, I'm going to get into epicenter, those are two centers to really start with if you haven't been in in a long time. Okay, sorry, Steph, keep going.
All right. And then I'm actually going to jump in here to kind of Performance Center here. So this is where the scorecards are going to live. As Mary mentioned, we've built all three scorecards, and we'll be working with the team to now populate the data. So the information in here is all fictitious testing data, to make sure that all the indicators were accurate. And this will be kind of your portfolio view. So when you come in this route, it will default to then selecting all of your schools. And you'll see here in the dropdown, this is where you'll be able to toggle between the three different performance reports. So first, starting with the financial, again, what's really cool about these dashboards here is that they are interactive. So as you click on a section of the pie chart on the right-hand side, it will filter down to those schools with that particular rating as well. So that's really neat, that you can quickly kind of toggle and see those, those schools. You can also turn on the, the legends here too. So there's a little gear icon here. So if you do want to kind of see what are, what are those legends for each section of the pie chart, you can kind of turn that on and off. So that's also interactive. And you can also export all of these ratings for each school and save it as an Excel file. If I switch over to academic, again, kind of does the, the same thing here. It's going to load all of your schools in your portfolio. It will show each of those individual indicators. And again, if I want to turn on the legends, I'll be able to do that easily too.
So these will, when you actually have all your schools' data loaded, you won't see the gray in the pie chart. That's just signifying that we don't have all the data for all your schools. The, the colored part of the pie chart is just the mock data that we've loaded. So just wanted to clarify, it will look much different than this when your actual data comes in.
Exactly. And then what's cool too, I'm actually going to hop into an individual school as well here. I'm going to pick on Albuquerque Aviation Academy. So as Mary mentioned, this is kind of your quick view if you come into a school. So a couple tabs, I want to make sure that you become more familiar with too, again, will be the scorecard. So for each school, they'll have their own scorecard as well. So if I come into that individual school, I can see, again, all of their ratings. I can expand it and see all the data that actually went into figuring out that indicator, as well as the legend for. So it basically will have all the information that you need to know for that particular indicator. You could also print these, as well as a PDF. So again, it's great if schools to, you know, can take these to their board meetings too, share them with their individual school board members, and they can easily toggle in between those different types of scorecards as well for each performance indicator.
And again, this is mock data, so this is not for this school, just caveat that.
Exactly, not real here. So again, we'll be working with the team to kind of get all this data populated into the, the system and have a mechanism to make sure it's getting in, in a timely manner for, in the future. The other part, again, is the, the school, school report here. So again, this is another great snapshot into how the school's doing. So it's going to automatically put in compliance information too. So these are the, the compliance percentages for this particular school. So you can see, have they submitted everything on time, and if there's anything that's late or past due. You also have quick access to the, the contract. So one of the things we've been working with the team to identify, what are those documents that you want quick access to? And we've been feeding and putting a lot of those documents here right on the school report. So if you want to get to their current contract, you'll be able to just click on that hyperlink, and there it is. So quick links to the contract. You can see with this school, they don't have anything due here upcoming. They don't have anything past due. Their board members have all been entered in. And then we also have some other additional files too, that you requested quick access to. So are there any conditions for renewal, their renewal analysis, their annual report? So we put those as kind of quick links directly on their school report. And then also too, we have started to look at other hyperlinks. So with epicenter on the school report, if there are other data reports that you want to link to, like a public website. So we did, for example, if you wanted a quick link here to the the school report card on this public website here, you can put in a quick, quick link to it as well. So this is kind of what we've been building out so that way you have quick access.
So this is a, this is gonna be a good page. And like I said, we can continue to build this out as you identify, what do I want quick quick access to? What do I want to be able to, because epicenter has tons of stuff. And we want to make sure that it's not hard for you to find. And so we're trying to bring it up in a consolidated form and so that you're able to easily find that. And this will be continued to get populated. So as you identify things, as PED identifies things, we want to make sure that it's all in one place. So you don't get lost in all the stuff that's out there for schools. So again, a reminder how to get to this school report page is you go to schools. You'll select your school that you want to look at. So Stephanie's doing that right now, so the school center to the school. Then you'll see these tabs across the top. Your scorecard will live there when they're ready, but the school report is already there. And so you'll have quick access to a lot of that stuff consolidated. And as some of you look at it, you're like, man, it would be really good to have that on the school report. So I can just go there, like, let us know and we can add it there so that it is. And think about frequently used documents. I know a lot of you go to schools or you talk to schools. You know what's happening in your cycle of meetings and you're like, man, I always have to get that document or I always want to be able to look at that. You identifying those will help us to then to say like, okay, let's get that on there so that it's just right there and you don't even have to search for it.
We've also enhanced our searching too. So if you do want to go and do a bigger search of files that are in the system, I recommend clicking on the the submissions tab here, and this is the full electronic filing cabinet. If you want to quickly bring up again, all contracts or any corrective action plans. And so this is kind of the full electronic filing cabinet as well, if you want to go back and search for for documents too.
Stephanie, can you show them how the search feature works so they can easily find some things if they know the name of it?
You know the name of it, so if I just start typing in maybe contract, again, it's gonna restrict it down and bring me right to the contract. Or by typing conditions.
So this is for the particular school. You can also do this for the whole portfolio and in Document Center. But if you're looking for just something for a school that may not be linked on to your your school profile yet, you can just go to submissions or Document Center and you'll be able to find it right away. And you can, they'll give you all sorts of filtering. And this is something we can include on the training so that you can easily find what you're looking for. We've built epicenter out to the nth degree for all the needs of everyone. And we're trying to make this and make sure that you guys can find exactly what you're looking for. But also, like I said, link those key documents right there in the school profile. So hopefully you don't have to go to the to the Document Center very often.
Or you might just start using the global search. So I actually use that now every day. I just start typing in either the name of a school, a name of a board or a file, and it gets me quick access to it too. So that's another way to get to any school, any file, just using the global search in the upper right, so.
And to give you some confidence, you can't break the system, okay? You you're not able to break this system. If you do, we're gonna do, we're gonna do a study on it. You have the access level that you are not going to mess anything up. You are not able to change things that shouldn't be changed. So your access level is pretty much view and you are able to interact with the system as much as you would like. And so don't be afraid of it. Like I said, School Center, Compliance Center. Eventually, when the data gets populated, Performance Center. And then, of course, Document Center if it's not on your school profile. So those are the, gonna be the three really key things for you to pay attention to. And then we will do, you know, additional training and upcoming meetings as well. So I guess, what what questions do you have? What curiosities do you have, whether for today or for the future as well?
We'll do Commissioner Beck. And then Julia has a question as well.
Yeah, real quickly, two things. One, I want to make a comment. That was awesome. Out of the 1,500 documents submitted, there were zero that were not submitted. I mean, you don't get to zero out of 1,500. I'm an old stats guy, that doesn't happen. But it did, so that that's, that's really impressive. Quick question, you're coming in on the 5th. Do we know, you know, I might, this might have blown by me, but are we meeting or is she meeting with the the schools? What's going on there?
Yeah, Stephanie will be meeting with Bridgette and the team to to continue building out the system. And so she'll be, there's some projects that we need to keep moving forward. And so Stephanie will be working with them in person to make sure those projects are are moving swiftly and that we're able to really move some of these initiatives forward.
Okay, so my question is, who is the team? Is the team the Charter of CSD? Or is it with the Performance Framework Team? Or or do we do it, since I'm on that subcommittee, are we gonna do that virtually or or is it just with CSD?
It's just with CSD, so just with the the Charter Office there at the department.
Okay, got it, thank you.
We we will probably though, Tim, you haven't gotten rid of us though. We probably will be meeting with you at a different time to go over, continue our last conversation.
All right, we'll do, Julia has a question and I think Commissioner Obenchain. Commissioner Obenchain, Sam, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm wondering what you attribute the 99% submission rate to. I'm I'm interested to hear about the user side and how their, what their experience is. And if you are, you know, surveying them, getting feedback from them about how the interface is working for their submissions.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm gonna, and I, you know, welcome Bridgette to have a conversation about or and joining this conversation as well. I was really excited when I came, you know, Megan and I came to the conference last spring. It was it was great news. We love to hear when anybody does like a survey question or anything. And from my understanding, the epicenter was one question on your survey out to schools. And overwhelmingly, it was the highest rated question. So and when I was there, even talking with school leaders in person, like, they really appreciate the system and enjoy it. And so I can speak, I'll only speak to that point. I'm sure, I know some of the the commissioners have talked to schools and I know the the team has. We do do surveys, that's something we can do, you know, in the next month or two. I think we always like to do it first year, we like to do it second year and really understand from their viewpoint, like, what would they like to see too? That helps us not only from your perspective and, you know, the team's perspective, but also from the school perspective. Because that's, that's who we're serving. They're the ones in front of the kids, that's who we want to make sure are, are, you know, saving time and efficiency. I'll speak from my own experience when I was in Chicago. We had, we increased timeliness very quickly. Just because it was very transparent, it was in front of schools, they could see exactly what they had to do. It was a system they could just go in any day and get it done. They weren't getting things lost in emails or on some calendar that's on a, you know, PDF. They were able to actually interact with the system. So this is typical what we see is we have an increase generally of submissions. And then I'm anticipating, I'm hoping that your timeliness increases as well. And so I think I, we went from 67% to 92% within three months of even timeliness, just because it was easier. And I always say, like, if your school leaders aren't scrambling to do your stuff, that means they're spending more time with kids and their team. And so we we generally see high performance, but that's something we want to keep monitoring. So anytime I see a lower percentage below, you know, 85%, I'm always like, let's assess that. Let's understand what's, is there something difficult for schools? Is there the timing wrong? So once we get more data throughout this year, I'll be asking the team that questions and say, is it, they're struggling with timeliness because it's, it's the time of year, maybe you should put it at the end of the month instead of the beginning of the month? That can make the world a difference. So as we see this data come in and we are able to look at it, we'll be giving you guys the team pointers as well, maybe some adjustments they want to make. And so right now, I'm real happy. I think the, some of the percentages look good and I expect them to continue to increase as well. Bridgette, oh, go ahead, Sam.
No, I was just gonna say that I think that with 99% and then I think it was what, like 73% on time? I think that just as a school leader saying, okay, what makes sense for me? And I want to be on time, but what is keeping me from doing that? So I appreciate that, that that concept of looking at that, so thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And school leaders appreciate it because sometimes they're not the ones submitting, it's a team member. And so they can start, you know, talking with their team to say, hey, why aren't we getting this on time? And then it can give us feedback as well. And like I said, sometimes it's a calendar adjustment or sometimes it's, you know, just an issue of instructions or whatever. So yeah, I, data is important. I like to look at it all the time and anytime we'll do an optimization review with your team at different points. We always look at that data and say, hmm, what's going on? This is what we've experienced with other partners, this might be something you want to consider.
And actually, too, coming later this month, I'll mention too, with the compliance statistics, you'll actually be able to sort it and kind of do a top to bottom. So if you do want to sort which schools have the highest percentage on time, which ones have the lowest, even through the accuracy, you'll be able to quickly do that within Compliance Center, so I'm super excited for that update coming.
Yeah, it can change conversations and it's it's easier to see some things. Bridgette, do you or your team have anything to add of school feedback?
Mary, schools continue to find epicenter more useful than not useful. We also, commissioners will be interested to know that we have had our first other PED bureau agree to allow schools to submit something in epicenter. So kudos to Birgit Merer in the Educator Growth and Development Bureau. So schools are going to update alternate teacher evaluation plans. And she's got an epicenter login and she'll go in there and review them in there so they don't have to do anything else. And so bureau by bureau, we're going to, we're building those relationships and we hope to, you know, to have more collaboration like that. And Deputy Secretary DeBelle is supportive.
I want to, I want to commend that that happened. That is usually the biggest struggle sometimes is that, you know, it's hard to get other people to understand. And that was my experience. And then once they were like, oh, this is so much easier. And we're like, yeah, it is. Even other departments and bureaus will 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 catch on. And so kudos, that's that's great news.
So there are some platforms that I don't think it's gonna work out, but I think if we chip away over it over the next couple of years, we might get to the point where, and you know, it gets critical mass and momentum.
That's great.
Yeah, because the last thing we want to do is just alienate everyone in the agency by trying to be ham handed about it. And Commissioner Beck, the meeting that we have planned with Stephanie at the Albuquerque office is so in the weeds detailed. You're welcome to join us, but I promise you're gonna be bored.
No, that's okay, I got, I got things going, I'll be okay. I'll I'll find something to do, that's for sure.
Other questions or curiosities?
I think Julia is up now.
Thanks. I think, Mary, you might remember that I just love databases. So it's very exciting to see what you guys have done and I've been hearing how much hard work everybody's been putting into. So that's really terrific. My question goes to maybe something that is still a little bit further down the road. And it goes to the PEC, every meeting looks at things in groups. So for example, if we want to look at all schools with an academic condition. So so it's, will there be or is there a way now to get that data out without going and opening up the 22 condition documents, you know? So to me, it's almost like a, an entry point in the database itself, not a document that's been uploaded, but then could generate a pretty quick report. And I know when I'm working a lot with Director Russell, we're saying, okay, how many schools are on a condition? How many schools are coming up next year? How many schools are whatever the, whatever the situation is? And both she and I actually have these like extensive old Excel spreadsheets. But it's really hard to manage that and a computer could do it for you. So I'm just wondering kind of where that is and how that could happen in a way that is kind of user friendly for those of us helping to manage the work of the commission.
Yeah, absolutely. We've actually been brainstorming on some of that and probably it'd be good for us to do a follow up with you from your perspective of what that could look like. So we have some solutions and I think there's some things we can do, you know, in more short order and then things that we could, you know, potentially build out, you know, depending on how you want to view it. So there's some ways you can, like I, I had this where I would classify schools, right? I'd be able to see like who's has financial conditions, who has this. And I was able to then bring that up and I could actually just click on a button and it would show me which schools, right? And then there's the deeper view of it is like, okay, which ones have been met and which ones haven't? So Stephanie, I've been thinking and talking with Bridgette of different ways that could happen. And so I think we could bring some ideas to you just to say like, hey, would this meet your needs? And and what else, you know, could we do? So I think, you know, and when Stephanie is there in November, that's one of the topics they're gonna be tackling. And we can bring that back and and see if that's gonna work. Does that sound good? Stephanie, any comments on that?
No, I think just kind of outlining exactly what it is that you need to see and do. And that's where I go back and and build it into the system. So I think those are definitely one of the topics that I want to cover with the team when I'm there on site too and work through it, so.
And and Julia, sometimes what's helpful is if somebody can show us an end product. We always like to see the end in mind. So if you have a tracker or you have something that's like, I would like this, if you could just share that with us, you know, even ahead of time. So when Stephanie's there and be like, hey, I would love to see this, this, this and this. And this is actually what it looks like right now. We can then see it and that will give us a good idea of what what the solution is to build it.
Exactly.
Just just the last point is a lot of times the commission has asked for this school to come back in June and this other school has, comes back in November. And so in addition to that, we're also trying to know that that CSD is on top of and remembers that this school is in November and they could be there for four or five different reasons. And again, you know, a computer is much better at remembering than than I am, you know? So and I would just think that that could happen, but I also know this is a longer term thing and you guys have been working on a ton of stuff already, so.
No, I, this is, this is the time to talk about those things, whether it can happen quickly or, you know, a little bit longer term. We like to know everything as much as we can. And so if the, if those are things, because I mean, we can track dates, we can track other things and it can be displayed. So if you're like, I would really love to be able to see, you know, and have these dates tracked in this way or this reminder or something, like whatever that is to help us build the user story, we can either configure or we put it in development and make it happen. So that, any clarity you can provide or any direction, that would be extremely helpful.
All right, great. Thank you so much, Mary. Thank you, Stephanie. We're so grateful. That's great. And Bridgette, Missy, wow, like, thanks for all the work you guys do to make those kind of numbers pop up at the end of the day. That's great.
Yeah, and and like I said, it's great.
We're gonna be on the intervention ladder if they didn't do it. Yeah, well, I mean, whatever works.
Well, well, thank you all for trusting us. We've really enjoyed the Commissioner, Bridgette and her team. It's, it's really, it's fun for us to see things come together and keep developing out. And your ideas and everything else is extremely helpful for us. And so we want to make sure it works for you, it works for the schools and. And so we want to make sure it works for you, it works for the schools and um we'll we'll keep, that's our North Star. Um, is that you have the information you need to make decisions. Bridgette has a system for her and the team that works and that the schools can save time and energy and focus on what matters most. So we're keeping those as our North Stars. That's been our goal and it's going to continue to be our goal. And we want to, we're happy to be along with this journey with you. So thank you.
Thanks so much and see you next week.
See you next week. Have a good one.
All right, great. Thank you. All right, that'll take us to item number three, which is not too much, but I can tell you um what I know latest. And Director Russell, if you have any more to add other than what I'm about to say, you're more than welcome to. But basically PCSNM, as you know, is going to be our fiscal um agent for this project. Um, they sent out a request for proposals um of earlier this month. Um, I did get word from uh Matt Paul that um they do not have a time constraint in which it ends, but they were waiting for um, they're waiting for several vendors to give a proposal so that they can actually evaluate it between multiple proposals instead of just one vendor. Um, they have released the scope that uh we that the um Strategic Plan Subcommittee um reviewed and approved. Um, so that scope of work went out and he said that they um have had a few vendors showing interest and they're expecting to have the initial proposals by the end of the month. Um, part of the uh scope of work that we did submit was ideally to have this project completed by the end of the fiscal year. Um, so as soon as that comes about, I mean, November, December, we're going to be pretty busy with renewals. But the way I'm I'm kind of anticipating it is if the process starts flowing and we're kind of in between P E C meetings, we'll go ahead and convene as a subcommittee and just do a very general outline of what needs to happen, make the expectations um without going deep into content right away. Because I think the first content meeting should be with the full commission. Um, so if it, if the subcommittee meets, it would be just to do a general overview planning and have it laid out to do the timeline part and present to the commission that. Um, otherwise, the first time that we'll meet will be as the full commission with whatever vendor is chosen um to give that go ahead and actually go through content and what that looks like as a full commission. So no matter what, as soon as we get word that we have a vendor and the money starts flowing, we'll take action right away, one way or another. That's, that's what we have for right now for the strategic plan. Any questions, discussion, anything that, anything that to help me relay anything, anything that's missing? And yeah, as we, as we get more information, I'll be passing it along directly to the Strategic Plan Subcommittee. And like, as soon as I have it, I'll make sure you all have it as well. All right, um, item four, and we're going to take this one item by item. Um, this is a present, well, first we'll do presentation of the renewal hearing schedule. And then we're going to do commissioner input to the chair regarding questions for the renewal applicants with hearings in November. So just the November schools. But first, I'm going to go ahead and give this over to um uh Director Russell, if you want to talk to us a little bit about the renewal um process overview.
Thank you, Chair Burt. Um, as you can see, we have a draft renewal schedule um for November and December. Um, all schools have have confirmed that this works for them. We've got three schools on Thursday, November twentieth, one on Friday, leaving time for a work session and meeting. And then three schools on Monday and Tuesday of the December week and one school on Wednesday, leaving time for a work session and meeting. So that commissioners can attend PCSNM on the eleventh and twelfth.
Any questions on the schedule, commissioners? Uh, Commissioner Beck.
It it's not really a question on the schedule, but just real quickly, um, there are three that that are coming over to us from districts, right?
Uh, correct.
And so it's on a, on a niece, uh, I'm sorry.
Non, yes, none of those are on the November schedule. It's um on Monday, December eighth, Moreno Valley Prep is.
Which is in Moreno Valley.
Which is in Angel Fire.
Right, okay.
The ninth, a Nancy Charter School in Taos is coming.
Okay.
On when, wait, hang on, maybe one of them.
Tuesday, Tuesday, Vaz Collegiate. I haven't heard of them before.
Vaz Collegiate? Why isn't Vaz Collegiate on here?
Tuesday at two.
It's right there. It's on Tuesday the night.
In front of my face, yes. So, yes, they're all in December.
But where's that from? Where is that?
Albuquerque.
Oh, where, do you know where in Albuquerque? Just out of curiosity.
International District, they're in the international district.
Perfect. Okay, great. I just wanted to know where they were from. That's it. Thanks.
Easy peasy. All right. Okay, thank you, Director Russell. All right, so that'll take us into the commissioner input to the chair. We'll start with J. Paul Taylor Academy. Um, so commissioners, if there are any things that you would like to add to a letter at this time, any concerns that you would like the um school to maybe focus on when they come and do their hearing? Uh, this is the time in which you should bring up as many concerns as you could have, things that you think could lead to conditions, things that you think could lead to a non-renewal.
Um, Chair Burt, I I do have, if I could share screen, um, I have, I have been crunching the numbers for the brand newly relea- uh, released twenty-four, twenty-five um proficiencies. And hang on Zoom, where's my Zoom? Here's my Zoom. Okay, um, here we go. So um, these are the four schools that are renewing in November, shown on screen. Um, as and so in the first column over here, actually, I'm just going to make this even bigger and then I'll like zoom in, zoom out. Um, J. Paul Taylor is a spotlight school all three years. Um, the only school, uh, Red River Valley has been spotlight traditional, they sort of flip flop. Six Directions has improved its designation from CSI, which is worse than A T S I, and then finally ending up um traditional. Then I'm gonna hide these columns so you can see better the the proficiencies. Um, so uh, the the cells highlighted in green show an increase of at least five percent between last year's proficiency and the newly released one. So um, as you can see, J. Paul Taylor was basically flat for E L A, but it's way above the state and the district. Um, Los Cruces has forty-four percent reading proficiency and the state has forty-four percent. So they're, they're well above. Um, they increased their math proficiency by five percent and their science proficiency by ten percent. Um, Dolores Huerta increased their reading proficiency by um nine percent to forty-two percent. They're still slightly below the state and the district. State's forty-three and Los Cruces is forty-four. Um, their math proficiency dipped and so did their science proficiency. Um, Red River Valley's E L A proficiency was basically flat, but it's above both district and state. State again is forty-three percent and Quest is is only twenty-eight percent. So they're fourteen percent above their district. Um, wait, yes. Um, for their math proficiency, um, they essentially tripled it. Um, they went from ten percent, which is really bad, to thirty percent, which is above the state and above the district. State is twenty-five percent for math and Quested District is um five percent for math. Um, so um, science, they increased seventeen percent. And this is again above the state, which is a thirty-five percent and above Quested District, which is seventeen percent. Um, Six Directions almost doubled their reading proficiency. Um, they went to nineteen percent, but again, still far below um state and district. Their interim data, their N W A map data is um is encouraging, shows growth. Student engagement is dramatically higher um when, when we visited last spring and last week. Um, their math proficiencies and science proficiencies were low last year and they're masked this year.
Are they masked due to student end size or to to the low proficiency?
No, due to end size.
Uh, I just, just wanted to say. Yeah, hold on, let me call on people. Okay, Commissioner Beck.
Yeah, uh, so the the data now for twenty-four, twenty-five academics has come out, correct?
Yes, did, yes, very recently.
Okay, and the Vista website has not been updated yet with that, correct?
Correct. Vista Vista's designations won't be out until November. We actually didn't expect the proficiency data out quite this soon. And I had for advanced files so that I could prepare it for you, but I learned about it by reading a press release.
Yeah, because the schools know it and they're sending information out and I I have no idea. Is there possible, you know, I I know you can't do it right away, but could you do this for all of our schools and then?
Working on it as fast as I can. I actually.
Okay, especially, especially the ones that are.
Working on it right now and I just, I need, wanted, of course, of course, yes.
Yeah, okay, great. Because I got some information. I go, I don't know, I, you know, and they do know and and we know. So, um, that would be great.
Well, in advance and will include it in our um, our preliminary renewal app uh reports.
Are you gonna have that tomorrow for those schools that we're doing tomorrow?
Oh, we're just doing organizational and financial tomorrow.
That's what I thought. Yeah, yeah. So we, we're not going to deal with academic.
Doing academics tomorrow in the annual reports. Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, perfect. All right, that's it.
I just wanted to flag that the letter indicates to the schools that any listed data will be included in the renewal hearing so that um whenever um Director Russell gets it, she can add it in.
Um, or, okay, so let's go J. Paul Taylor. Yeah, um, commissioners, any items that you would like to be added to their letter? The only one I have is just a concern about financials.
They do, um, yeah, they do have um more audit findings than most schools. I am actually not planning on recommending a financial condition for that.
That's fine. I, that's okay. I think it's appropriate because of, I looked through their previous annual reports, I read through their application. I thi- I think the financials, it just seems to be something they're continually working on. I just don't want to ignore it um and allow, once again, just for, give more information and make a decision later. I'm not saying anything about a decision. All right, anything else for J. Paul Taylor? I'm seeing shaking heads, so. All right, next one is La Academia Dolores Huerta. Um, any items to put on their um letter? Uh, Commissioner Beck and then Commissioner Gibson?
Yeah, I think we want to uh uh point out the deficiency in math from twenty-three, twenty-four and science, but specifically math under ten percent. What's their, what's their uh curriculum uh and professional development strategy to improve that fairly quickly?
Math academic performance?
Yes.
I don't, I think he just said math.
Well, I did say science too, but I I, let's just focus on ma- uh, from in my, from my perspective, let's just focus on math.
Okay.
Because science will follow.
Commissioner Gibson?
Yeah, I I'm going to echo Tim with the math, but I hopefully we get new information on their quest for a new facility. They mentioned in the application that they were hopefully going to sign a lease, but I mean, it would certainly end up being a condition if they don't have, they don't have a place right now for the school. So I'd like an update on uh where they are in terms of their facility.
All right, and I had, um, I noticed a historical trend of low level of English learner progress at this school. That's something I'd like to add. Uh, no English learner progress. And I also saw over several years, some financial issues.
For Dolores Huerta?
Yeah, for twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-two, twenty-three, there were some financial concerns and reds.
They haven't had any audit findings.
I'm looking in their, my recollection is this school. Oh, I see, yes. So it was for the first two years, but they've been squeaky clean years three and four. And their, their red in, their does not meet in twenty-one, twenty-two was for a single significant deficiency finding.
Okay. We don't have to, yeah, that's something good.
Yeah, but overall, um, like if you look at their, where's their part A? For audit findings across the charter term, like they had zero findings at all in F Y twenty-four. They had one finding and it was not a repeat or a material, it was just in other matters. Um, and that significant, so yeah, oh, no, excuse me, they had two significant deficiencies in twenty-one and and one material weakness in twenty-two. But yeah, I, given the last two years and the fact that the the auditor has been really digging for the last two years and charter findings are way up, the fact that they've got none tells me that they're.
Even but even more than normal.
Yeah.
Got it. Okay. Anything else for Dolores Huerta? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and go to um Red River. Commissioners, any items you'd like to put on for Red River? I made a note in my, can you look at finances for them as well? Because that's something that I.
I I have their.
Commissioner Ingham?
Yeah, I was just wondering, can can we give kudos in this letter? And and say somehow, you know, can we give them some uh?
Not the focus of this letter, no.
Okay.
This is a very specific to let them know, you know, any, yeah, that's what I saw is those three reds in a row.
So this is, this is their part A, yes. Um, for indicator two B, they do have three reds in a row. And for their audit findings, so here's their audit findings. They, they have three findings total in the most recent year, one repeat, one material weakness. So there's, there's not, they've had, because they had material weakness findings in these three years, one or two per year, they've got the red, but this is not one of those schools that is.
Oh.
And oh, you know what? I remembered this, there, that finding that was re-
It's okay, you know what?
Yeah.
It's a, from from my perspective, I think seeing three reds in a row feels very appropriate to list it in the letter and have the school come to us and with, just knowing that that's something that they should be prepared to speak on at that time. We don't have to go through it now.
She's actually on.
It's a, it's not appropriate for now. It's for the hearing. Yeah. And it's not that once these letter, the the idea behind these letters isn't, you're gonna, these are, you're gonna get in trouble for it's, hey, these are things we need more information about, be prepared. Like when you're creating a presentation, don't skip over this part. Um, so that's, that's the purpose of them, not to make any decisions or actually get information on them today. Is there anything else um on Red River outside of that? I mean, they every, it looked like almost everything else was green on there. Like they had so many greens outside of that, just those three reds in a row. So, okay, great. Um, let's go to Six Directions, uh, commissioners. Items that you would like to be included on the letter for Six Directions? Uh, Commissioner Beck?
Uh, this might be inappropriate to talk about right now, but was the head adminis- did the head administrator thing get ironed out or anything?
Um, Commissioner Beck, I I spoke with uh three board members and the head administrator. They have not accepted her resignation and it's, it's effective October thirty-first. And I have let the um, I have let the board know that if she does in fact resign and doesn't rescind her resignation, that they have to have another licensed administrator in place on November first. that they have to have another licensed administrator in place on November 1st or they'll be in violation of their contract. They're aware, they have two weeks. And for right now, as far as I'm concerned, they're completely in compliance with their contract. It's, it's an internal board member matter, whether they can convince their head administrator to stay on or if they find someone else, as long as they're in compliance with their contract and they are, I have no concerns.
Perfect, thanks.
Commissioner Claschel?
Okay, thank you. So the, the entire contract is in compliance and the contract that they're currently functioning with?
Yes, Commissioner, it is, they are in compliance.
All right, so the administrator doesn't, I mean, there's no, I mean, it's a separate area then, okay.
She's just an employee of the board and she has submitted a resignation, a notice in epicenter that she's resigning effective October 31st. Their hope, they've told me that they're hoping to convince her not to and stay tuned.
Okay, all right, thank you, that was my concern, thank you.
One thing I did notice when looking at their historical things is they have a couple items that although they're making improvements, it just still looks like it's still very low, particularly their graduation rate. And I have seen growth over time, it's just still very low, so I'd like to add graduation rates onto it. The staff credentialing issue, I don't know why it's a year-over-year issue that I keep seeing. They keep getting reds in that staff credentialing area. I'd like them to just speak on that a little bit more. And the governance requirement indicator keeps getting that red repeated. So those, those would be the three things for me to add, just to get more information from the school about what's going on, what happened and where they're going, how they're improving it. Anything else, Commissioners? All right, that'll, that'll do. Ms. Barnes, thank you for helping us with getting those ready for us and we will get those sent out to those schools. All right, we are on to item number five, Subcommittee Updates. First one, Charter Performance, Vice Chair Gibson.
Yeah, no one came to the, the meeting, so we obviously didn't meet.
Thank you, and actually I should have said I had a little plan when we came to this item. I think this last month we've had, we had an extraordinary amount of lack of attendance in the subcommittees. And I think Commissioner Gibson suffered the most due to that. And so I've spoken to Director Russell about having the CSD staff leaders be more proactive in getting attendance. But Commissioners, I do need to request that if you're on a, if you're on a subcommittee, it is important that the attendance, you know when the committee meets, if you're confused by it, that you are proactive in that. And just ensuring that those subcommittees are, the attendance to those are being managed appropriately as well. But I did talk to Director Russell, we'll start being more proactive from the subcommittee lead side, from the staff positions and in making sure the, we know who's coming and who's not and if things need to be rescheduled in advance. So thank you for your attention to that in the future as well.
And I apologize to Patty on that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I apologize too, I, my calendar showed that the meeting was canceled, the last subcommittee meeting, so I'm not sure what's going on with that, so I'll look into it and I apologize again for not being there.
Thanks, Commissioners. All right, let's go ahead, Budget, Vice Chair Gibson, and I do have some, some numbers to help support you in this when we get to the Performance Framework Grant.
Okay. So we had, the Budget Subcommittee did meet and we had three things to look at. And I'm trying to pull up and be reminded of what the second one was. The first one was an item that we talked about at our last meeting, which was a request to go to the Budget Subcommittee for a study on the challenges with building facilities for charter schools. So we did receive a scope of work, that scope of work is in the meeting materials. And the Budget Subcommittee looked at and talked about what we thought might be a reasonable amount of money and a timeframe for the completion of that study. So tomorrow on the agenda is a vote for the appropriation of no more than, I think we put $10,000 for the, for the study. So we should be able to move forward with that as soon as the, the vote is taken. We also talked about, shoot. I know we talked about the, the awards.
Leah, Leah created the new budget sheet.
Oh, the new budget sheet, thanks, no, but that wasn't on the agenda, that was just shown. There is, we want to send kudos out to Bridgette and her staff, Leah in particular, because she has created an incredible spreadsheet and reports for us so that Commissioners can look at, really in great detail, our budget and there's, see. Just a minute. There's, there's all sorts of color-coded pie charts, so I think there's a drill down as to, in terms of the PEC monies, where we're, where the PEC monies are being spent. So that is, that, Bridgette is going to provide a link so that Commissioners, and I think Bridgette, we talked about, you showing Commissioners how to access that link so that they can get, so they can see these reports.
Yes, Commissioner Gibson, we will get, view, make sure, we're having some Google Drive issues with, I, I know Ms. Barnes has been struggling with sharing and unsharing and folder permissions. And because these spreadsheets are so easily damaged, we like to give almost everybody view-only access. And so we have to be careful which folders we put them in and we're, we're going to work with the in-house IT guy who, who manages the Google Drive and get all that straight.
Okay, and now I've got the third, the third piece, the regional meetings. So there is, we wanted to give Commissioners an update on the regional meetings and the cost of those regional meetings.
Yeah, we're going to go into, we're planning on doing the presentation of the regional meetings at the Indicator Success Subcommittee, but the budget, but the budget for it is right here. We'll get into.
And this document is living in the Budget Subcommittee's folder, correct?
Yeah, so this, this part is in the Budget Subcommittee, the like schedule and content.
It's in the IO, is in the ILS.
Correct.
Yeah. And this isn't something that we're voting on, but we wanted to just keep Commissioners apprised of the potential costs.
And this is once again replacing the conference money, like basically taking some of those conference monies and using them towards this instead.
And Consuelo has a detailed plan on getting the message out, the RSVPs, making sure that schools are RSVPing for these events so that we have clear numbers to provide to the venues.
Is this something that we're planning to do, we're saying as a commission in like the summer months or?
No, we had, we talked about this at the last month and they're actually, get the exact, February and March.
Late January.
Wasn't the Albuquerque?
January to February.
Wasn't the Albuquerque one, wasn't the Albuquerque one Friday, the 30th of January and Saturday, the 31st of January?
I believe so, but that's, that's in the ILS.
Right.
Yeah, we'll get into the schedule in, in just a moment.
Oh, okay.
But the intention was, okay, we can talk about it with the ILS.
But this is the cost, instead of spending 300,000 on the conference, I think the total anticipated was like 80,000 to do these, or was there a total amount? Forty, oh, 41.
It's more like 40,000. But Consuelo is not, is budgeting for about half of the board members to come, because, I mean, if everybody comes, it could be 80,000, but wouldn't that be wonderful if they all come?
Right.
It's significantly less than the conference.
Significantly less than the conference and yet we, so my, I have a meeting next week, or no, actually week after next, after I, no, it's next week, after I get back from NACSA, with the bud, with ASD about the, the quarterly, the quarterly budget meeting. And I'm hoping that we know what our bar is going to look like because we're desperately short in contracts in the 300s right now. Because if all of the schools apply for the PEC support grants and if all of the boards apply for the ILS, we are going to go so far over budget. So hopefully we can allocate that, because we've got some extra right now in 400s. And we're going to have to put some in salaries too, because I think I mentioned the other day that PED budgets for a 15% vacancy rate. And when I do my staffing update tomorrow, you'll see even with three positions vacant, we're still just at budget for salaries. And so we've got two positions posted, we're interviewing for them, unless we create another position, keep it vacant, we're going to go over budget.
Okay, but I think we'll be fine once we get the numbers.
Patty, do you want me to go over the Charter, the Charter Performance Grant numbers that we got from this morning? So the Budget Subcommittee also met this morning and we reviewed the application, so this is news, new news for Director Russell as well. We had 38 applicants already apply. We had 30 get, receive approvals, and so Patty's going to be, I'll be working with Patty to get her all that information, so she'll be sending out approvals and then I'll be providing the, the same information to you, Director Russell. We had four schools that we needed more information, that their application just wasn't sufficient. They didn't provide enough information at all, like we asked for information in detail and they didn't do that. So there's four that are, where they're going back, we're going back to them to get more information from them. And then there's four of them that we're going back to get clarifying information. So they provided information, but we needed some clarifying content from them. So Patty and I are both working on contacting those schools, those eight, to get more information or to have them clarify what they did provide. But we did, we do have 38 as of right, you know, within this first month of applications. That was the start.
I think that's it for Budget Subcommittee.
Yes.
Okay, all right, next, Policy, Commissioner Obenchain?
Yes, I think the, the two items that we have on our plate right now are, one, the MOU, and I think Chair Burt, you may have some news to share with folks about communication with the Secretary or the Assistant Secretary. And the other one, the second one, is the Intervention Ladder document that Ms. Barnes has put together that I've been working in communication anyway with Director Russell about. And we, she has some thoughts about it, so I want to make sure that we get the CSD's input. And so I've kind of punted that a little bit down the road until after NACA conference and then I'll be meeting with her and then have a report for the Subcommittee after that. So I don't know if the, if there's any movement on the MOU, but at least there's a response.
Yeah, and I will give that update tomorrow as part of the Chair Report.
Okay, sounds good.
Great, thank you. Legislative, Vice Chair Gibson?
We did not meet.
Commissioner Correio is not present, but we also did not meet his Board Awards last month. Okay, Indicator's Success, and I don't know if, if Consuelo is around, if we get her back up here. But a couple updates, so first of all, the program did officially launch. You should have all received the email that all the schools received, or I should say all the governing boards received. So Missy actually took the time to create an email for every single governing board to where every member was listed, everybody got the email as a board. And so we also got that information. So if you hear of any schools and they're confused or they don't know what the, what the Indicator's Success program is, the information is in your email, so you can read through it so that you know how to talk about it as well and how to make sure, get them access to, to that information. That, that was sent out and then we are planning on using the regional meetings as a kind of launchpad for, for multiple things, you know. One of the biggest primary focuses of the regional meetings is to really connect with governing boards in a way that the PEC hasn't yet. And so really creating that direct communication from board to board, kind of getting together, breaking bread, seeing each other as humans, acknowledging them for the work that they've been doing, thanking them for the work as a governing board member, it's off, it's, it's definitely a thankless volunteer job. So that's, that is one of the primary purposes of that regional meeting. In addition, we felt like it was a really great opportunity to provide an element of training for the Indicator's Success Program, especially since this year is its pilot year. So we are going to create, as, as part of the Indicator Success Subcommittee, we're going to be creating a presentation or content to do a training on what it is, what's the purpose, the why, the really the why behind it, because we know as a new program, it could easily fall into a compliance and, you know, they just check off the box and, you know, we have to get it done to move on. But we really want them to see the value and seriousness of, of how it really can help improve their school. So we came to Consuelo and asked her to help us go around the state and create some dinners and breakfasts with some, with all of the governing board members across the state and inviting all the Commissioners to attend every single one if possible so that the board members can meet Commissioners and Commissioners can meet the board members in person. So Consuelo, I'm going to hand it over to you and thank you for the work to do on this. Because it's not just those training sessions, it's not just the dinners and breakfasts. There's also going to be school fairs that are going to go along with it in different locations. So it's a lot of logistics that you're handling for us, so I'll let you go ahead and walk through it with us. And I know you also need some information from Commissioners in a timely manner when it comes to how the Commissioners will be participating, in which, in which areas and which meetings. So we're, I'm going to help support you in making sure you get information that you need to know in the time that you need it so that you could do your job.
Thank you, good afternoon Commissioners. So we're going to have two dinners in Albuquerque for the schools in Albuquerque and the surrounding areas there, well, it's all Albuquerque. And they're gonna, they're broken into two groups. The first dinner will be Friday, January 30th and the second dinner will be January 31st on a Saturday, so Friday and Saturday evening for both of them. And we could have up to 120 at each of the dinners. I estimate it half or right now because I didn't want to be locked into a venue for a high amount of food and beverage costs. So I've kept most of the food and beverage down for the bigger events to 3,000 instead of 6 or 10,000. So the numbers that you saw earlier were estimates of half of the attendees. So we're like at 41,000 for all the meetings that we're going to. Um, the meetings that we're gonna have with them are dinners. And um, if it doubles, it'll be like about eighty, eighty two thousand. But right now, it's like about forty one thousand. Um, so like I said, the first two dinners will be at the end of January, Friday, the thirtieth. And Saturday, the thirty first. Then the following week, we'll go down to Las Cruces. And Friday, the sixth, we will have um, a dinner there. And then we'll have a week off because it's Valentine's weekend. And then um, after our P E C meeting. Um, the following, cause our meeting's on Friday. On Saturday, we'll have a lunch in Taos at El Monte Sagrado. And the reason we chose a lunch is because we don't know what the weather's gonna be like. And we wanna make sure that people can travel up in that area, because that's gonna be the northern part of the state. So people will be traveling from Santa Fe to Taos. And I forgot the other names of the school districts in that area, Missy. So Red River, Angel Fire, and it was easier for Angel Fire and some of those places that got packed with snow to go into Taos. And um, the last one will be on Friday, the twenty seventh in Gallup, New Mexico. And we'll be having a dinner there. Um, right now, we have not signed the contracts with the venues, they're holding um, the spaces for us. And the reason I didn't wanna sign contracts with them yet is because we're going to be um. Having a room block of rooms. And so I really need um, to find out by Tuesday. I'm gonna send out a survey to you and um, find out who's gonna attend and if you're going to need a room that night. Uh, any of the venues. So um, some of them you might need two, some you might need one night. So you just need to let me know. And it says that in the survey that I already developed, which I'll send to you first thing tomorrow morning. Um, and if you could respond to that, like I said, by Tuesday, sooner possible, because we have to sign the contract, so we don't lose the venue spaces. I think the only one that you would really need two nights at right now is um, while in Albuquerque at Hotel Chaco. Because they're two nights. And also in El Monte Sagrado, because I thought that after our P E C meeting. We would wanna travel up there after the meeting to get to the hotel. So we're ready to go for lunch and then maybe that night, I don't know if it's gonna be cold, icy, snowy. You might have to spend the night there again. So those are the um, most important is to get me your, your, if you're gonna attend, your R S V Ps and the hotel rooms. And if anybody has any questions, please.
Will you send us like a, a form to fill out?
Yeah, I'm gonna do it like we do for R S V P for meetings.
Got it.
I already made it.
Okay, great. Alright, Commissioner Beck.
Uh, yeah, so uh, I know we talked about this, but you know, things blow out of my mind. So w- we're basically just going to dinner with them and interacting with them and doing that. We don't actually have any meetings with them, because they're doing their own meetings. Is that correct?
Right, so these, it would be, the way that we see these happening is it would be, it will start out as a dinner, like as a welcome dinner, as a. Thank you dinner, like we're grateful for you dinner. But then we are going to have a, a subtle training piece. Uh, where we're introducing the indicators of success program to them in person as well. Yeah, but uh, you know, if, to talk to them about it in person, instead of just getting the email. Just, this year is a pilot year, but next year it will be required for every one of these governing.
Right, right. Do they, do they have any training before dinner?
No.
So this is a dinner and then introduction of uh, indicators.
Correct, but we, we are um, we, we have been talking to uh, Missy and, and Director Russell about um. Allowing them to actually have an hour of training credit um, towards their governing board hours, the requirement. Um, to where they are not only incentivized by having a dinner with the wonderful commission. But also that it actually goes towards their required um, training hours, which we know is most of those board members, you know, they're busy. So giving them that credit for being trained in something that actually is quite important is uh, something that we're grateful that. And actually, thank you, Missy, for being the one to say like, hey, you should do that.
And by the way, Hotel Chaco is a sweet hotel. It is a sweet hotel. And it has this awesome bar on the fifth floor where you look out over the mountains. So that in itself, for the Albuquerque people, will be an enticement, no doubt.
Um, I really went through and picked um, venues that I thought were worthy of the governing boards. Um, the time that they give to us freely, so I picked some really nice venues for.
Hotel Chaco is sweet, it is not very nice.
Yeah, Patty?
Yeah, and in terms of timing, for those areas that are, if they choose to have the fair. Cause we're leaving that optional for the areas. Um, we chose this timeframe so that the fair would occur before they're doing any of their lotteries. So that hopefully would help them with the lotteries if they had the fair.
Alright, any other questions for right now about, about this? So be expecting an email uh, from Consuelo as far as like a res- reservations, your R S V P to these items. I, and please, please, we really would like to have as many full commission attendance at all these as possible. Um, because once again, this is part of us showing them we appreciate them. Which once again, thank you, Consuelo, for being so considerate in that. Um, you know, sometimes I have a, I have a, I grew up so poor, so it's so hard to be like, spend money, you know. And I'm always grateful that Consuelo's like, you know what, these governing boards do a lot of work. They do a lot of work and they deserve to have more than a Subway sandwich, you know, for dinner. So um, yeah, the, the intentionality behind it, I'm very, very grateful for. And so I do think that's, that is the purpose, is to make sure they also, see, we really are grateful for the work they're doing. Um, cause they really don't get, they just don't get recognized often. So thank you, appreciate you.
Thank you, guys.
Alright, so look out for an email for Consuelo, please, um, make sure you respond to that in a timely manner. I think this is gonna be one that if you don't, Consuelo will probably be calling me to let me know which of you didn't respond to her. And I'll be reaching out to you, so if you don't want that to happen, just get back to her right away. Um, and then we can move forward. Alright. So yeah, any, and, and, and once again, if you do, if you interact with any governing boards between now and that time. Please remind, like, let them know about those dinners coming up, let them know we want them to attend, talk to them. And make sure they know that the pilot year of the indicators success program is open now. And um, they are eligible to opt into doing the survey. And they can opt in to applying for that ten thousand dollar support grant as well in that areas. Uh, um, that's available for them right now. So please do help encourage and spread the word to governing boards. Um, that we are looking to help support them as well from the P E C perspective. Alright, and then strategic plan, we are, I just gave you the update um, earlier, so we're good on that one too. Alright, um, item number six, um, L E S C, Vice Chair Gibson.
So I have been attending yesterday and this morning, um, the L E S C. They've had some interesting discussions um, regarding teacher preparation. And uh, really incentivizing the teacher resident program. P E D is in the process of getting the data. So that a report's going to come out, because honestly, I don't know, I know charter schools do participate. But they, but they did not have a list of all of the schools that were participating. It wasn't P E D that was doing the report, it was C N M and U N M. So, but it's really um, they're finding that there's more individuals that are. Uh, going through the teacher residency program, which pays, I think if you're a special ed teacher residency. It's up to fifty thousand dollars, I think, a year to be paid. You're working with a, you are a co-teacher with the teacher for the whole year. So it's an incredible program in terms of preparing teachers. You're supposed to um, guarantee three years to the school district. And hopefully you're in the school, you're going to get a job in the school that you're doing the residency program with. So they're looking to the legislature to expand it and put more money into it. And also putting more money into stipends for student teachers. Cause it appears now that the stipends for student teachers is kind of whatever is left over. From the residency monies that's not used. And they're also looking for this to becoming recurring funds, not having to be applied for every three years, which it, which it is now. So it's kind of exciting to um, that they're investing so much money. Into growing teachers here in New Mexico and supporting them, which is the key.
Thank you. Uh, L F C, L F C is actually meeting right now as we're speaking. And actually the let, next couple, they seem to have a very similar schedule to us over the next couple of months as well. Um, I, they did have a um, a presentation from the secretary that I will need to go review. And so I'll give you a more comprehensive update. Um, once I am able to go back and take a look at what was said and how it was said. Um, so there is an education update um, that is available, but it's happening, it just happened. So I will um, give a better report next month. Um, Indian Education Advisory, Commissioner Klastra Shilich.
The, I attended the government to government summit meeting this morning. Taking place at Buffalo Thunder. And both the advisory, Indian Advisory Council and the Indian Education Division. Both have been very engaged and involved with um, the Martinez Ciazi lawsuit. And the governor at the meeting this morning talked about the importance of the document. Saying that she considers it a commitment between the state and tribes. And she said that um, very important to that is providing resources to tribes. She then went into a concern that she has regarding a billboard. I guess that's up in Albuquerque regarding how the state of New Mexico education is fiftieth. Is, is there, I guess, yeah, there's a billboard. And she advised everyone to let this play on, using her words, to let this play on our minds. Because she said that any change in numbers will occur quickly, it'll occur slowly. And that we need to remember that the changes that have occurred right now, there's a shift, I guess, with kindergarten. Um, the kindergarten numbers. And she said that there's a fourteen percent change in kindergarten, the kindergarten area of New Mexico. And she said that that took a while to happen, occur. And they are next, they're going to start concentrating on the next level, grade level. And she said, she remembered all of this, that it's gonna take time for another change to occur. So going from fifty percent, which she even questioned were at. Um, is gonna take a tremendous amount of change, so she said, please remember that. Um, evidently, the education, um, tribal education, education to tribes receives about thirty million dollars. A, uh, year. And she put out a plea to the tribes that they really need all the data. Required for them to respond, I guess, to a report that is needed from all the tribes. And she told them that it was very necessary that they get that information in. And. Um, she stressed, again, she went back to the fifty percent status that the state of New Mexico has. And stressed the need um, to make shifts in higher education to make that change. And she said she's really for free college tuition and free trade tuition training. And is for trade, free trade tuition um, training. Um, and indicated that that is really gonna be a concentration of hers. Um, and then we heard from um, the Cabinet Secretary of Early Childhood Education. Child Development, Groginjski. And she was very um, informative and giving some of the history of her, her division, area. Saying that um, the systems within her, you know, built with tribes in mind. That her mandates in, in childhood education. A lot of times does not intersect with um, the mandates of tribes. So there's a systemic problem here with the two systems coordinating with one another. And she said that there must be strategies in place to address the self-determination systems that are in place for tribes. Um, and she said she's looking at this from the standpoint of choices that tribes are gonna have to make. And as a result of having more communication with tribes. She said that um, then programs can be designed to, which will be inclusive of families. Um, and she said what she would like to do is restore balance or identify a balance that doesn't exist right now. Um, she was very um, um, gave a lot of her strategies. And to the points that I brought up. So um, the tribes came across very complimentary of her. And were very um, concerned about some of the historical concerns that they've had through the years. And she was able to address them. So that. Time with the, with the governor and the cabinet secretary went very well. This afternoon, they were gonna talk more about the Martinez Ciazi um, plan that is in place. And, and give their presentation to tribe. So right now, that's the concentration of the advisory council and the Indian Division. Department within the state of New Mexico. So that was it.
Thank you. Alright, next update is from uh, P S C O C, Secretary Ingham.
Uh, yes, we, we did meet last week, um, and we have uh, well, Michael Goss is continuing to keep. Uh, um, their, their school in there, on the agenda. And, and they did recognize that their, their application has been processed. Um, so it's the somewhat awkward for the council at this point. Um, we did hire a new um, director for the uh, P S, P S F A. Should be interesting, um, he has been working for one of the members of the council, uh, Ashley Leach. Um, up till now, so that's kind of interesting and we'll see how it works out. Otherwise, uh, we, we will be having a meeting on the tenth of December, which is the same time we're meeting. Uh, our meeting is, so I, I, I'm gonna probably be bouncing back and forth on that one, we'll see how it goes.
Alright, thank you. Thank you. Alright, Commissioner Manus, Namipsia.
We met, but nothing significant to report.
Great. Uh, and Commissioner Creo is not present, so. And I get, and it looks like next month, we'll definitely have an I M G, uh, so that'll be it, we are adjourned for today, thank you, everybody.
Cool.
Bye bye.